Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance and remarks by County Member Milton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, at this time of year, I know I always, I kind of give the same speech around this. Everybody sit, please sit. Yes. Thanks for asking permission. I just want to say, you know, we're getting into the back-to-school time. I know a number of people have kids that they're taking to college for the first time. And God bless those parents. That's always a hard time when your kids leave the house to go on their own. But we also have kids that are remaining here in grade school and in high school. And so this is my annual reminder to everybody, please watch your speed around the schools. I've already gotten some complaints and it is a major problem. We have had people come up and testify who have had children who have been harmed. And one even testified about a year and a half ago on another issue whose child was killed because they were hit by a car near a school. So when I say that, I truly mean we all sometimes get involved in our own lives. We're in a rush to get to a meeting. You got to get the kids dropped off and maybe you're running late because one of them couldn't find their shoes. I've been there. But I just want to remind everybody that this is the time when we are very fortunate that we're getting all of our kids back to school, that nobody is at home at this point in our city. So we want to keep our kids safe, not in the schools, but also outside and around the schools. So please, please, watch your speed and as I always say, keep kids alive and drive 25. But when you're around schools, drive a lot slower. Let's go 10 or 15 and keep our kids safe. Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you and good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you all being here and look forward to hearing your testimony on today's items. I'd encourage you to turn your cell phones off or turn them to vibrate, please.
Item six, the resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Kiwett subdivision, replat one located southeast of 27th and Leavenworth Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Luce.
Yes. Scott Los with TD2 Engineering 10836 Old Mill Road, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at 8557 Boyd Street from DR District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communications in opposition.
This item was delayed from our July 13th meeting and the public hearing continues today. Just your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Alvin O'Kirkie, 9201 Franklin Street. Might just try to set this up. All right. Appreciate another opportunity to present this in front of you guys today. Once again, good afternoon. I always forget that. All right. I want to start off by saying consideration to and sensitivity to the neighbors and the neighborhood was, is, and always will be primary as far as I'm concerned and this particular development proposal is concerned. Unfortunately, that does not appear or did not appear to be perceived that way. Of course, I have no one else to blame but myself. And for that, you know, I suppose just wanted to make sure I stated that clearly. After much consideration, I do have a proposal today that, and let me make sure, that is certainly along the lines of speaking of consideration and sensitivity to the neighborhood as well as the neighborhood's request for more consistency. It's a little less creative than I was hoping to proceed with this project with, but it at least accounts for a lot of the issues that the neighbors have brought up and we've discussed in length. First off is an example of essentially the existing zoning in the median area. I've highlighted the, our site, my site. And as we've pointed out in previous meetings, certainly predominantly low-density R1, R2, R3s. Obviously, this is DR and certainly within close proximity. We have our 5s that exist right there, about three different developments, a PUD, of course, as we can see there. But, and the proposal and the request here is for R5 zoning. Just another visual to explain the approach. I've highlighted five total cul-de-sacs here, which essentially are similar to what I am going to show you in a bit here, just to, again, with consistency in mind, try to create something that is similar to what exists. Similar number of homes actually, as far as these particular ones are concerned. And, you know, whatever characteristics that come with the cul-de-sac, of course, already exist in the neighborhood with a few areas of example here. And I fully expect that this would comply and will give a better idea of what we expect to move forward with on this site. There's, again, the site highlighted there. Just as a quick note to point out, I've sort of written down here the total number of homes that are within these three particularly. There are 19 homes on the northmost one, 20 in the middle, and 19 again on the southernmost. And what we've done is, what I've done is basically try to replicate, again, these cul-de-sacs and essentially show and mirror what we have on the north side of us here. And that's how we've landed with the proposal that you will now see. So starting off with, actually similar to the R2 zoning standard, about 80-foot-wide lots. What we've tried to illustrate here is essentially similar to the R2, 80-foot wide with the characteristics of a single-family home. So single structure, two units, and within that 80-foot-wide theoretical parcel with the two units, it will be split into two for 40-foot-wide property widths and essentially individually owned homes in each of those. There are a total of 12 here, 12 structures. Sorry, eight or 12, correct. Hence, and then essentially total of 24 homes. And again, what's important here is to illustrate that the goal is to create similar layouts that already exist in the neighborhood, try to keep the scale similar to what's already existing, slight, of course, change due to the density that's requested. And with consideration to, again, the points that were made by the neighbors, obviously standard-sized streets, we've made emphasis to the standard depth as requested by the neighbors, which was certainly always a consideration. Enough depth to accommodate two cars wide in some instances and certainly deep in practically all instances. Just for the sake of further explaining, what I have illustrated there is essentially symbolically representing pretty standard medium-sized SUVs that are fairly common nowadays. Obviously, that's shown too wide and able to accommodate essentially too deep. That is, again, this is a zoning request, of course. However, this will reflect what will be requested as far as the plat, although this is just a general site plan and certainly not a survey or a final plat. All that said, I'm certainly available and open for questions.
Okay, thank you. And normally at this point, I would just call proponents and opponents.
Sure.
And I'll do that here in a minute because we have, I continue the public hearing.
Absolutely.
But since you're there and since this was laid over, I might just ask you a couple of things.
Sure.
Because this isn't my district and part of the reason for laying over the application in the first place was just lack of detail amongst the neighborhood and not really knowing what potentially sensitivity zoning might do.
Of course.
In the Keystone area. And as we discussed, it's not really realistic for anyone to think this isn't going to redevelop someday. And I think you are well-intentioned with your efforts here. And you were well-intentioned in coming to two neighborhood meetings we've had since, I think. But in both instances, didn't have any details further to show. And so I think neighbors are reasonable in requesting that detail before any kind of rezoning would move forward. And as you know, that's my position today, too. I'm a little surprised that what you just showed was not anything you showed to the neighborhood at those meetings and not to me either.
Right.
So that makes me question even more today whether this is ready to move forward. And it's going to be my recommendation that this be placed on file for now until and unless you can come up with more details and perhaps group a rezoning with a replating process that we all are on the same page and can engage the neighborhood in that conversation on what this may or may not be in the future. So I just wanted to let you know that for now and we'll see if folks have questions for you here in a minute. But I'll finish the public hearing first and we'll come back to you.
Okay.
So to finish that public hearing, I'll request proponents now. Anyone else in favor of this today?
Did you want me to respond to that at all?
Not yet.
Not yet, great.
Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none, I'll take opponents.
Mr. President and City Council members, my name is Charlotte. I live at 8774 Levermore Avenue and I am the president of the Keystone Community Task Force. I am standing before you today asking that you deny the zoning request from DR to R5 for 8557 Boyd. As was stated at the July 13th meeting, Mr. O'Kirkie was granted a four-week delay and informed that he needed to show the neighbors' plans for the property. I set up two different meetings with Mr. O'Kirkie, one on July 19th and the other on August 4th. And on both occasions, he had nothing to show. What he just showed us is new. And from what he showed, the ingress and egress is going to be off of Boyd Street, which Boyd is already a busy street. I don't see how that would be feasible. So again, Keystone is not against this property being rezoned or redeveloped. We are against the R5 zoning, but we do stand in support of an R3 zoning, which is in that area, that's mostly what that area is, is the R3, there's some R1s and R2s. We are single-family standalone homes. And the other question I have is if he does these duplexes, townhomes, does that have to be filed under an HOA where he's responsible for maintaining that property with the snow removal and taking care of the mowing? Because there's one, as far as I know, there's only one HOA in Keystone that's off of 72nd and Pratt. So what he showed was okay, still not showing us what they're going to look like, you know, traffic, sewer, you know. Like I said, Boyd's busy and you're going to have all that traffic coming in and off of Boyd during like school rush hour. It's not going to be feasible. So again, I'm asking that you deny his request and have him come back at, come back to us with an R3 zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hello. Rachel Herman, 8710 Templeton Drive. I come here today to ask that you vote no on the rezone for this property. Mr. O'Kirkie has had two meetings since the last city council meeting with Keystone residents and Mr. Festerson. In the first meeting, he did not want to speak about the project in front of cameras. He stated that he had a plan that he wanted to show us on paper, but would only do so if the news left. We never got to see these plans. Why would he not want to present in front of the cameras? It was decided to reschedule another meeting with no cameras present. I was unable to attend that second meeting, but heard that his presentation was underwhelming. I would think that if Mr. O'Kirkie was confident on his project, he would have come fully prepared to the city council meetings and the Keystone meetings. If you were a developer, why would you not be excited to present all the details of your project when asked? It just does not make sense. Why wouldn't he openly share these details with us? A few days ago, he called our neighborhood president and made her aware that he would like to sell the property. If he is looking to sell, I am not sure why we are all here again today at this meeting for rezone. Now, I feel like he has one foot in and one foot out of the project. I would like to see someone who is fully committed and open and honest from the beginning about this project. Because of his unwillingness to be forthcoming with the details of this project to the neighborhood at our neighborhood meetings and his lack of commitment, I feel his lack of commitment, I respectfully ask that you vote no on the rezone. Now, I had prepared this statement before I came today. And then Mr. O'Kirkie, I think you gave a very nice presentation of what you're thinking of doing. And I just wish you would have started with that, started this off with that. And I think we probably could have worked, felt that there was more transparency and that he was willing to work with us. And I think that would have been reciprocated. Please vote no on this. If he is going to come back to our neighborhood with any other projects, I would suggest that he starts the way that he did today. I think that looked pretty nice and there's probably some things we might be able to work with with that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hello. Taisha Kazemke, 8645 Keystone Drive. The plans that were presented today are things that we have not seen before, as each has noted. At our last meeting in the neighborhood, we were given a guesstimate of 30 to 50 homes being put on Boyd. So the statement that I prepared was based off of that. 30 to 50 residences on Boyd in that small section would be overwhelming. Boyd Street is already overwhelmed. Despite having multiple meetings, we really haven't seen much of a progress. We've heard plenty of doublespeak. There's been an array of ambiguity. Today was the first time that we saw something in a number that is lower than the residences that he was proposing previously. I do ask that the council vote no against rezoning. I think we are a long way from getting to something that Mr. O'Kirkie and the neighborhood feels will be beneficial to not only the new residents that will come in to his established development, but the residents who are already living in Keystone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Hello. Cindy Keller, 8555 Boyd Street, also on the property at 8553 Boyd Street and 4101 North 87th Street. Property at 4101 North 87th Street backs up to the property in question on the south and my home to the east. So I have a lot at stake looking at the possibility of an R5 going into that property. We have a single-family home on 10 acres. We would like for you to say no today, of course. And our reason is similar to theirs in that we've not been presented with good plans. We feel that what he has proposed in general is overwhelming to the neighborhood and we hope that you'll say no today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'd like to thank you for the nice weather that you presented us today. I'm a resident of Keystone. My name's Kerry Hofer. I'm at 3306 North 78th Street. And in the last meeting, I was present. And as stated earlier, there was no real information of clarity of what was going to be put in there. And we was all the way from 20 to 50 units in four buildings to be resold at $250,000 apiece. When asked many times of what's your plans, of what we're looking at, there was a lot of confusion and no clarity on the issues. After the meeting, he was fielding questions and we were asking questions and he had made a statement to me that, look, I'll walk away from the project. Make me an offer. So I offered him two-thirds of what the price that he paid for it, of course. So I have a problem with the clarity and the confidence, the program, his development going through as stated, and his commitment to the process. So I'm asking, please say no to rezoning at this time until we get something better than like what we had today, but we had nothing to look at earlier. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I mean, I think that Mr. O'Kirkie is actually very well-intentioned. I think what he did is he wanted to come see what kind of zoning he could get before he put any plans together. And unfortunately, that's just probably, that's not what we like to see here. We like to see something that's, we like to see a set plan so that the neighbors know exactly what they're getting. We're put in a position right now that although I liked the plan for today where it was 12 units, I think 12 duplexes, so it'd be 24, which I think fits the space and would be a lot better for the neighborhood, but I don't know if you need R5 for that. Again, I think what I would like to see is more plans. And instead of denying it, what I would like to do, like what Councilman Festerson recommended, but as president, he can't make a motion. So I would like to motion to place it on file. And what that means is, Mr. O'Kirkie, if we were to not, to deny it, oh, there you are. If you want to come up, you can. But what that does, if we were to deny it, you would not be able to reapply for one year. That's what it says. If we just place it on file, that means that we didn't approve it. But if you can come up with a better plan, if you can take this 12-unit idea and then maybe go back to planning, figure out what zoning you actually need, because maybe it's something less than what you're doing. And again, I leave that, the planning director doesn't want me to be able to tell you what zoning you need.
Of course.
But it sounds to me like since you're flexible with what you want to do, why don't you go back, work with planning on this new idea, figure out the zoning you may need, and then come back with more specific plans, what it looks like, pictures, landscaping, kind of so that the neighbors know exactly what they're getting. And I think that that's what's important. We do like to listen to the neighbors and we're, but we're also, we want development. We don't want land to just sit there open because we want more development and kind of a landlocked Keystone, development would be really good here. But we need the right, kind of the right development in here and, or at least know exactly what it is and have the picture. So then we can hold you to that. If we were to pass it today, you could then just turn around, resell it to somebody else that's not going to do anything that you said today. So that would be the reason. I do think you have good intentions and I understand why you wanted the zoning first. But I think in this particular case, it might be better for us to place it on file than give you more time to figure out exactly what you want to do with the property. So do you understand what, instead of denying, we're just going to place it on, I'm going to file a motion to place it on file?
Okay. So is a rebuttal necessary then at this point to try to address these items that were brought up or is the decision...
Well, I'll give you the opportunity to address. I'm just letting you know that I've made that decision because of the lack of detailed plans.
Sure.
I think that the neighborhood, the neighborhood deserves to see those.
Sure.
So I'm going to give you that opportunity. Instead of denying it and making you wait a full year, I'm going to file a motion to place it on file so that you can do that at any time. You're not limited.
Okay. Well, you know, it's unfortunate that commitment, my commitment, is being called into question. And as far as the offer to remove myself from the equation, as far as the name is concerned, was being misrepresented. There were various comments that were made regarding interest in this property before I came into the picture. And in light of that, and of course, in addition to other ideas that the neighbors had as far as use of this property, seemingly well-intentioned as well and well-positioned to do so, I said, certainly for the sake of the neighborhood, if someone could come forward and implement it to their interest and better theoretically better than myself and the development that we're proposing, that I would certainly remove myself and sell it to any...
Right. And I guess I, see, I'm not there.
No, sure, sure.
What I would like to say is I believe that you're well-intentioned. I really like kind of that initial plan that you just showed us, but it's just kind of a drawing of 12 units. I mean, and we don't even see the unit. So what I guess what I'm saying is what I would like to see is a better plan. What are they going to look like? How is it going to fit in the neighborhood? What exactly is there? So then we can have some kind of set parameters. So when you come back, it's more than, it's more than what you showed us today.
Sure.
And then I would, I would support something like what you're doing.
Right.
If it fits with the neighborhood, it's 12 units, that's feasible, even though Boyd's busy, that's feasible. You're not going to really increase traffic on Boyd with that many units that much. So I'm very supportive of you developing it. I'm just not at the place right now.
Sure.
Where there's, you haven't given us enough today for me to support that.
Sure.
Okay.
To clarify, it was, it's 24 units.
24 units, but it'd be 12, I'm sorry, 12 buildings.
Correct, correct.
12 buildings, 24 units.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, to touch on the point that you made as far as, I think you said guidelines, but essentially just as much as, you know, there are other parameters that will help the progress of the project. but essentially, just as much as, you know, there are other parameters that will help the progress of the project, this is a parameter that I am requesting. And to have shared wall structures and R5 is required. So in addition to, I mean, that's specifically the reason there is, this is a request for an R5 zoning.
No, I understand that, but maybe as your plans progress, that may change. So maybe once you have a bigger...
Well, that won't change. That's the reason I presented this today.
Okay, well, I'm going to file a motion to place it on file unless you want me to do a denial. Then you'll have to wait a whole year. You don't want to do that, do you? I'll do a motion to place on file so that you're not precluded from coming back within the year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, an ordinance to rezon property located at 4615 Davenport Street from R435 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees Communications in opposition.
The public hearing on number eight was delayed since July 27th. We'll continue the public hearing today. The applicant, please. Mr. Alvers, yeah? Name and address for the record.
Chad Alvers. I own the property at 4615 Davenport. Thank you for having me. I don't want to take up too much of your time because I think last time I was on a Zoom call, I couldn't get out of work. So I was, my wife was on Zoom, and I actually was on a phone call with you guys. So I had a big speech drawn up of going to bring in and talk to you, but I feel, like I just said, I don't want to waste a lot of your time. I know some neighbors aren't happy about rezoning this from an R4 to an R5. Really, all I want to do in the area is improve the Dundee area. I own multiple properties around the area. You can look up Thomas Michael Homes. You can look up Chad Alvers. All of our properties are in pristine condition. We've never had any violations with the city or anything. So with this property directly to the west of me is a lot that we are switching, which, again, too, from my understanding, I can have it an R4, and I don't even have to come in here. So I think the neighbors, they don't even want me to build anything there. But I think, from my understanding, I have already got the lot switched. I can go ahead and build a single-family home, no problem, but what we're trying to do is switch it to an R5. The reason why is I feel Dundee needs some change. I know neighbors, I don't like change a lot. I know some people don't like change. But Dundee needs a little bit of change, and I haven't used this. If I put this in here, will this show up? Yes. Okay, is that, okay. That's the front of my truck, and this is the alley that you drive through behind my property, right there, and the neighbor's property. You can barely drive through there. It's unsafe. There's more trash and litter. I mean, you get the idea. And then right next door to me, this neighbor came to me. He had people living in his garage. He had to put locks on his garage. He's got a camera there. You can kind of see with a sign. I'm not sure where the camera is. The camera's there somewhere to keep people out of there. It's weeded, and I do have to say, I just bought this property not too long ago. Mine is right to the west, and I do need to clean up my side, so I definitely do. And I will get to that. We just haven't. But when you drive by this, and you look at this here, this is that exact same alley, right there. Beautiful grass. They're going to put in a nice fence. That is what they call the monstrosity that was built. This is just a duplex, actually, right back behind our property and up about four. And then again, this is the same picture of that area right there. But when you get back here to the alley, it's, everything's just, it's unsafe. I can, I have a big truck. I can barely drive through it. So I'd like to clean all that up a little bit, and whatever we do build there is going to match the Dundee area. It's going to look good. And again, like I told you last time, I wish I could provide plans of what we would like to build there, but we don't even have any plans with that. All I want to really essentially do right now is keep our property separated for mostly tax purposes. And the house that we just purchased, I would like to keep that separate from the lot. And other than that, though, I want to keep, the neighbor right to the west of me's put a lot of money in his house. You can see it. He's got new windows. Last thing I want to do is upset him. I don't want to, I don't want to build something there that he's going to have to look at every day that is going to upset him. So I mean, that's by no more, no more, it's not our intentions at all. So any questions they have, they can feel free to call me. My number's on my truck. I'll be happy to talk to anybody about it, but we just want to clean up the area and allow some other people to move into the area. Sometimes if you build a duplex compared to maybe a single-family home, most, the average single-family home in Dundee, and my whole family sells real estate, is over $200,000. And that's, you're not getting much. So to build a single-family home right there on that lot, you'd have probably $400,000 or more. And that, with today's building costs, I don't even know if you could do it for that. So I know some neighbors last time had mentioned about the pricing, getting priced out of Dundee. I don't remember who had something to say with that. But some of these that they did build, kind of to the south of me, they are very expensive. But what we're going to do there is probably just eventually maybe a small townhome or a duplex that's going to fit the area, and hopefully won't be $450,000, something that, you know, maybe somebody can afford. But again, it could be ten years down the road before we do something. But I would like to do something because I think the vacant lots in the area give other people a chance to get in there because it's such a dense area, brings more taxes for the city. Instead of just a lot sitting there, we get a property in there, more people to clean up the alley and just take care of things. And then more, more people in the area for the businesses. There's a lot of businesses in that area which are really good friends of mine. They're struggling. And we all know that from last year. So if we can get some more people in there, we're going to get some more taxes and more revenue and so forth. So again, I don't want to take too much of your time. That's, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Yep, we'll probably come back to you here in a minute.
Okay.
But for now, I'll ask for any other proponents that might be here today. Seeing none, any opponents?
Opponents?
Yes.
Thank you for being here today. As I gave you two pictures here.
Just your name and address?
This is Mr. Alvers' property here.
Sir, just your name and address for the record?
Oh, my bad. I'm Rod Hamblin. I live at 4623 Davenport Street, just to the west of this. As he referred to again today as a vacant lot, as you can see, this is not a vacant lot. This is a yard. As you can, it's, I know it's hard to see, with the one with the air conditioner here, you can see where there is a cement patio that is on both sides of this property. And behind this is a walkway that'll take you to the back alley where there's a fence. And also in the other picture, there is an outbuilding where the previous owners would store their lawnmower in, garden tools, or whatever they needed to store in there. We are not against it staying at R4. If it stays at R4, Mr. Alvers wants to build something that's somewhat like what's on our street, we're not opposing that. What we're opposing is, if it goes to R5, he can stand here and say whatever he wants, but it's already been approved here, then it just goes to the planning board, and boom, it's rubber stamped, and we have one of those houses that's behind us that we don't want in our neighborhood. So I'm asking you to leave it at R4. Mr. Alvers can still build on the property. He can still put a house that looks like the area that we live in and that we want. So I would like you to leave it at R4 if you please do. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon. My name's Charles Johanningsmeyer. I'm at 4631 Davenport Street. She's very nicely passing out paper copies. We don't have anything to project here. We are three lots to the west of the proposed division of Mr. Alvers' property. I and my family have lived at this address for the past twenty-three years. And, and by the way, I apologize for not having it color-coded and copied. I don't have access to that printer. I have lived there for a long time, and Mr. Alvers says, "Oh, you know, neighbors rarely want change." That's actually not true. We just recently took in 290 units into our neighborhood just two, three years ago with the Duke. Not everybody was thrilled with that, but it was using vacant land. It was building property tax revenues and so forth. And most of those people have been very good neighbors. And I just want to kind of talk from personal experience, though, because maybe I was the one who talked about the monstrosity that was built behind us because I noticed that Mr. Alvers' photos do not do it justice, as you will see. And let me say from the start, I am like my neighbor Rod Hamblin. I'm not opposed to the applicant, Mr. Alvers, dividing the large lot he has bought at 4615 Davenport into two lots. Keep them R4. Each lot would make a fairly typical size lot for a house on this block. However, for a number of reasons, I'm very much opposed to your allowing Mr. Alvers to have these lots rezoned as R5 from their present designation of R4. And here are some of the reasons. I am absolutely certain, I know what will become of this property if it is rezoned. That is because the lot behind my house, and you can see that in image three, the lot behind my house, a duplex now comprising the addresses of 4628 and 4630 Capitol Ave, it was rezoned two years ago to R5. And you can see on the map how its zoning designation stands out on that block. It's the one R5 on that block. And you can see what that means in image three. And I can assure you that hardly a day goes by that my wife and I don't say or think to ourselves, "We wish we had done something to oppose that," when we had a chance. Unfortunately, the person at the Planning Department I spoke to when I called, when I got the notice for that, said there was nothing really I could do and that the structure would be, quote, "only two stories tall," end quote. Now I know better. That's R5 coming into a neighborhood like ours. As you can see from the photos I took just yesterday, the property itself stands out like a sore thumb. If you see image three, I sort of marked them at the bottom there. It towers over a neat neighborhood of mostly single-family houses or small duplexes. And I might mention that it's almost the mirror image of the duplex built three years ago at 4625 Capitol, directly across the street from there, whose zoning designation is, to me inexplicably, if you look at that map, still R4 despite its containing three units and being approximately thirty-five feet high. You can see in the photo that I present in image four, too, how this property now looms over my backyard. I notice Mr. Alvers looks at the alleyway. He looks at the little garden there. Turn that camera up, and that's what you see. My privacy fence is no longer a privacy fence because I've got people watching when I'm playing in the backyard with my kids. They're looking out. It feels weird, right? Just people looming over you. And so that's what I'm opposed to. If he's granted this application to have the lot rezoned, I'm sure this is exactly the type of building that was the result. I do not believe for a second that Mr. Alvers, or whoever he subsequently sells the property to, will be able to resist building some type of modernized duplex, townhouse, or condominium set like the ones behind my house. After all, each of those units, the ones behind my house, is currently listed for $539,000. And it's hard for anyone not to be tempted by the prospect of tearing down a house, say at 4615 Davenport, that might sell for $150,000 and building a large structure that one can sell for over a million dollars. And by the way, I want to say, I'm not contesting the style of the likely building. I'd like it to fit in the neighborhood, but this is the United States. We don't get a say over, you know, the paint that he's going to use or that type of thing. It's the size. That's what bothers me. It would change the character of the neighborhood. Most of the houses on our block of Davenport, as you can see, we are all R4 on our side. On the other side, actually, there are small apartment buildings. But on our side, they're all R4, and they're about twenty feet high, mostly single-family dwellings, one duplex. R5, though, allows a building up to thirty-six feet high, the type one sees in the photo of the duplex on Capitol Street. I'm also very worried about the precedent that you're granting this application would set for our neighborhood and others like ours. And it was interesting, very informative for me to hear the previous applicant out at 85th and Boyd. If you grant this type of rezoning, I believe this will send a strong signal to developers that all they need to do is buy up the single-family houses on our block and others like it that are zoned R4, apply to the city council for rezoning, have that approved, and then build apartment buildings and duplexes and turn a tidy profit. Next on the list, I'm afraid, will be my neighbor's house to the west on Davenport, slightly uphill from me. Then I would have a thirty-six-foot structure built on land about eight foot above my property to my west, blocking out the afternoon sun and essentially putting me almost in a canyon at the bottom of a box. Where, I've got to ask you, is this all going to end? I'm all for infill development, right? But we have to be careful about what kind of infill development. Otherwise, Omaha is going to lose its neighborhoods. And neighborhoods are really important to Omaha. People identify with their neighborhoods. You know, our neighborhood has gone from, I'm sorry, but what we used to call it, I used to describe it to people as Dundee by the skin of our teeth down near the old cement plant. It was kind of a edgy area. Now it is under all sorts of pressure for development. I think there are a number of other areas in Omaha that are under that type of pressure. And we need to be careful about how we control that development. We need affordable housing. Omaha needs affordable housing, absolutely. But nobody should be fooled that granting an R5 to the applicant is going to lead to any affordable housing. Right across the street, we have apartments from us, wonderful neighbors, nice people. They're like eight units in one, I think six in the other, and so forth. And I think they pay about $700, $800 a month. That's affordable housing. But there's no way that Mr. Alvers is going to build that kind of unit in that area. And anyway, they're selling for much more.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Do we have a couple more speakers?
Yes, I'll finish up here. And Mr. Alvers might say, and he did in his Zoom call, "Oh, well, you neighbors knew when you moved in there that there are duplexes and apartment buildings nearby, and you should accept this as the status quo." As I noted above, yes, we did know about the duplexes and apartment buildings when we moved in. However, by this logic, I would contend, Mr. Alvers should have recognized when he bought this property on Davenport that it was zoned R4, and he should accept that. But I notice he isn't accepting the status quo of R4. Instead, he's asking you to change the zoning designation for him so he can make more money. We need zoning. We need to make sure that slaughterhouses aren't put next to schools, McDonald's aren't put in the middle of Fair Acres, and we don't have large apartment buildings being plopped down in the middle of nice, quiet residential neighborhoods like ours. So for all those reasons, I would encourage you to vote against this proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents in the audience today? We do have one opponent registered by Zoom that we'll get to here in a minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Alinger. I live at 4601 Davenport Street, where I have resided for the last twenty-five-plus years. We raised our children on this block. They were free to run and be kids and ride their bikes. And we have endured the building of the Duke Apartments that are directly across from our backyard where we had privacy for twenty-two years. And now we have twenty-six apartments, twenty-eight apartments, looking right into our backyard, which has cost us money to try to figure out a way to get our privacy back. And so I just want to say that I agree 100% with everything that has already been said. I just don't want to be redundant and repeat it all. But I am opposed to this. These properties on Capitol Avenue that have been rezoned look very inappropriate in our area. And I do not mind if this lot is rezoned and there's a little house that looks like our neighborhood. But this, what potentially an R5 would do to our neighborhood would further erode the charmingness of it. And I think charm should be, I think charm should be allowed to continue in the Dundee area. We've had enough of a disruption with the Duke Apartments. We've had enough of a disruption with the Duke Apartments. Parking isn't crazy on our street because of it. And I just, I just see bigger units as causing that problem to be more problematic. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience today?
John Alinger. I live at 4601 Davenport. And I oppose this change from R4 to R5 also because of what people have said. We've lived in this house for 25 years, as my wife had said. And there used to be like a little city or a little country road going up past, even with the cement factory. It was a little noisy at times, but mostly in the summer. But there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of little critters that lived over there, a lot of birds, a lot of wildlife. And it just was more like a little country road rather than now. We have cars parked all the way up and down the street. We got them parking all over the neighborhood. And there's just not a lot of, as you know, in any part of that part of town, there's not a lot of parking unless you build your own garage or your driveway to park on. And it, and now like my wife said, there's 28 balconies that people are out, and it just feels like an invasion. And the, and when you do, when you're outside and you, it echoes up and down there like a big canyon because of all of the hard concrete, brick and such on the buildings there. And it just doesn't quite fit. And we used to have sunshine every morning and we had a nice view in the morning, too. But now we look out our windows and we see brick and we see people and their balconies. And they're nice folk, they really are. But two stories would have been much better. And four stories is, and it's even a little more, that's closer to five stories if you really look at it and measure it out. Anyway, I oppose this because, as Mr. Joe Henningsmeyer said, there's two of them across the alley from him. They look quite modern and they're quite tall. You can see him from Dodge Street, just driving up and down the street. And I would rather not have another one in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm a few blocks from that area, but I used to drive around there a lot and I still do enjoy it, but it's disappearing. I had some friends that lived over there. Now you can't see the skyline over there towards Cathedral. You can't see the trees because of that big, long stretch of multi-inhabitant apartment buildings that went up new just above Walmart and where Target used to be. But it also appears that in the master plan, the blighted areas and severely blighted areas are now very much close to my street. Maybe I'm already in that area. And yes, I'm a proponent of free enterprise, be able to invest in properties. But we've had long discussions about slum landlords and things around here. I have a house on the corner of 50th and Lafayette. It's probably 5000, owned by a real estate company, multiple people living there. There are younger people, so they're probably not all married or whatever, they're not all their children. But they play in the street in the middle of the night. You can't drive down 50th Street anymore like you used to. So pretty soon, maybe that house will be dilapidated. In fact, I don't have a picture of their backyard, but their backyard looks just like the pictures that Mr. Alvers showed us. We have community partners and agencies in this area called neighborhood associations. And then we can also go clean up those yards and do special assessments. So rather than do this, which I'm opposed, why don't we send the city out to clean up those alleys and specially assess the homeowners that own those properties? But maybe they can't afford to do that themselves because their property taxes are going so high. Think about that. Now, up the street, a little ways to the west of those people are some very beautiful old houses. And I fear that you guys are after those for more development of multi-use apartment buildings where everybody has a bar and a restaurant and maybe a grocery store right in the bottom of their apartment. What are you going to do with all the streets? We cannot support the traffic and the parking for all of these vehicles. Dodge Street from Saddle Creek on, maybe both directions, or pretty soon, everything will be dilapidated except the medical facilities. You drive people out, you let it run down, and then maybe you sell it to somebody for $5,000 and they develop. They might be out-of-town developers who won't necessarily stay in Omaha. And they won't necessarily cough up the tax benefits that they get. But the point is, there's people like me that live in those areas right now that used to be able to enjoy their backyard and the view towards the east. So why don't we take some of these big buses, load up the neighborhood associations, and take them in to help clean up the back alleys and the backyards of these places instead of selling them off, letting realtors buy more of it up? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience? Seeing now, we do have an opponent by Zoom, Mr. Chatham. We'll try and unmute you here in a second.
City Council, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yep. Name and address, please.
My name is Charles Chatham. I live at 4611 Davenport Street. So I'm the neighbor directly east of the lot in question. In principle, I support individuals and businesses investing in my neighborhood. That said, I must oppose the rezoning and eventual division of that lot, not because I'm worried about a new house or whatever may overgo in that spot or aesthetics, but for legal reasons. 4611 and 4615 share a driveway and a garage. Holding this together is a very loosely worded agreement from 1992. Functionally, it might as well not exist. So there's no real legal teeth regarding how this area should be maintained, look, or anything. As a result, no meaningful repairs can be made to the garage and to the drive without both parties agreeing. And this has led to the garage falling into a serious state of disrepair. Now, I understand this is not the place to argue the how, when, or if anything should be done with that garage. But due to the extremely narrow lot, or 42605 would create, it's unlikely that another garage could be constructed anywhere but conjoining to my property. Right now, that plot can support another garage if that's something that, you know, we come to an agreement that needs to be done. I think it's a reasonable ask to resolve this issue before we make any further changes to that lot, changes that will definitely complicate any legal actions moving forward. You know, I spoke with Mr. Alvers about this. I even wrote something up. But he was unwilling to commit to any type of repair or demolishing the structure, really anything. And that's really all I've asked to do is for us to come up with an official agreement. So because the only thing that was offered to me was basically a handshake, I kind of have to force the issue. And right now, it's probably the simplest it can be. But I feel like I have to do something right now because if I don't, I feel like that structure will continue to deteriorate because my hands are tied. Or at best, the exact minimum is going to be done to keep it from being condemned. My principal fear is if this lot's split and I don't do anything, you know, years down the line, it could become an issue for a right of way or something where, you know, I can't make any changes to it. I guess what I'm trying to say is it's already complicated and I'd really prefer addressing it now rather than have some changes made to that area to further complicate things. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask the city to at least postpone this action and further actions to that plot until we can clearly define what the eastern property line looks like. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Fanslow, can I ask you a couple questions? The approval that the planning board gave from R4 to R5, can you give a brief explanation as to why that was given? The explanation you gave me when I talked to you and Eric?
Mike is, there it is. Sure, yeah. Dave Fanslow, City Planning. Planning Board, so Planning Department receives an application. We did our report and we forwarded that report onto the planning board. The request really is, in our eyes, pretty simple. R4 zoning and R5 zoning are both low-density residential zoning districts. So a request to go from R4 to R5, in this case, here is master plan compliant. I think it's important to note that this one site, it's one lot, up until 2007 was two lots. And in 2007, those two lots were administratively combined to create the lot that we see today. The site development regulation, maybe I'll expand on what I told you the other day, but the site development regulations, as far as setbacks in height in R4 and R5 for a single-family home are exactly the same. Five-foot side yard setbacks, 25-foot front yard setback, and a 25-foot rear yard setback. We've been told that this one lot, the applicant wants to, again, make, go back to what it was prior to 2007 and take one lot and create two, which we can do administratively. The issue with the R4 zoning at that point is R4 requires a 50-foot lot. So right now, this site is only 98 feet wide. So we couldn't do that administratively unless the applicant or property went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a waiver of lot width. So if we, if it's rezoned to R5, there can be two 49-foot wide lots that both could house a single-family house. So one more thing, and then I'll probably entertain more questions. But with a 49-foot lot, which would be legal in R5, you can't put much else on it or anything but a single-family home.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate you and Eric taking the time last week to kind of walk me through that to make sure I was clear on it. And I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to lay this over so we can have this discussion today. And you don't have to come up, Mr. Alvers, but the two comments you made were, one, that you showed a picture of that alley that you want to be a good partner with your neighbors. And I think that pledge that you made here to make sure you clean that alley up, I think that would go a long way with your neighbors. Certainly, I would feel that way if I lived in Dundee up in that neighborhood. And I talked to several of you on the phone. And first, Rob, where are you at? Rob, I had a nice, you don't have to come up, but I appreciated talking to you on the phone. And I want to apologize for stepping on your foot back there when I was talking to Mr. Wheezen, and I stepped on your foot, so I apologize for that. But I had a good discussion with you and listening to what your concerns were. And I just wanted to, again, thank my colleagues for letting me walk through that process as someone that's new on the council and how that works. So I got my questions answered. And I just, again, want to, and congratulations on your retirement from UPS coming up in the other month. So that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Bagley. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of the questions I was going to, at least have stated for the record, have been answered. I wanted to, I was also going to engage Mr. Fanslow to just remind or state for the record that whether it's R4 or R5 zoning, the height restriction is the same at 35 feet and the setbacks are the same for both R4 and R5, and both are still considered low-density. I was glad to hear, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Joe Henningsmeyer. But I was glad to hear you say that it wasn't the architecture that you're, that you're maybe concerned that it might be similar to the one at 4628 Capitol. Because as you stated, it's, we all have different tastes. And if it's properly zoned and we want to build something that's to code, then we have the ability to do that. So I want to make sure that that was also stated. As it relates to the neighbor to the east on 4615 with the shared driveway and garage, I don't know that that's necessarily an issue that should, is going to weigh on my decision for the rezoning and for the two lots. But something that I'm sure Mr. Alvers and so on, the neighbor can work on, Mr. Alvers, if you want to come up, please. Come up to the podium, please. And you'll have to state your name and address again, please.
Chad Alvers, the owner of 4615. Charles, to the east of me. I mean, him and I have talked and I thought we'd become pretty good friends. And when I bought this property, the garage, he is right. It is in probably disrepair. We're going to probably demolish it, maybe try to repair it, but it's, you know, building costs are so expensive right now, we're not going to do it right now.
Okay. So I'm sorry to interrupt, but as I said, I don't think that's an issue that we're going to decide here today, and it's not part of my decision-making process.
Right. It has nothing to do with the lot.
Okay. So enough said on that. You guys can figure that out later. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I think there's a difference here. I guess, Mr. Alvers, could I have you come back up real quick? And, Mr. Alvers, we're talking about one single lot right here, and you're asking to go, why are you asking to go to the R5 simply because you want to make it a duplex or a townhome?
We want to probably do, because we feel we're in the area that the TOD district, that's very dense, 25% of the homes in a 10-block radius of that, or 10, I'm sorry, 25% of the homes in a 10-block radius are, I don't know if they're zoned R5, but they're multifamily. They're apartments or everything. So we're in the area that, that's where all of that is being built.
But I just want to get to my question because, I mean, I understand, you don't have, if we had what you were going to build, it might be a little easier, you know? If we had the details, it might, even for the neighbors. And you're not required to do that because, in all honesty, this, going from R4 to R5, this is nothing like the last case where we have something zoned DR.
Correct.
And we're asking, and they're asking to go to an R5, which is something completely, completely different. But right, right now, we just have one lot, we're talking about one house. We're not talking about the difference between 50 units and 24. We're talking about just one. One, one building. And your setbacks are exactly the same and your height's exactly the same. But I think what the neighbors would feel a lot better, because when I do look at this, the picture of that, kind of that big tall, and I think the reason it looks so tall is because of the grading. It's the one built on Capitol that they were referring to.
Yeah, I know that one.
When I look at it, I mean, it really does stick out, but I think it's because of the grading.
That's got to be over 35.
And it was, well, that's what I said until Mr. Harding, who knows more than I do about these things. The way it's graded, it is only 35 feet from the grading, but it slopes down, so it really towers over everything below it. It doesn't appear that you have any grading issues on yours. It looks like completely flat land.
That sits on the top of the hill, yeah.
So you wouldn't build something that over towers because you're still limited to 35 feet?
Limited to 35 feet at R4.
So you can't have something that towers. And I think that that's the difference. But I also think it might make the neighbors feel better if you were to show what you were going to build so that maybe it's not just an eyesore in the middle of the street.
I understand that, but I think my feeling would be, I bought this property with the intention, knowing that it had two lots to it originally, it did, and everything. I don't see why I have to present them with anything because it's my lot. And if I want to do something with my property, I don't understand why I have to do that. And I don't want to upset them, but...
I understand, but this is what I want to tell you. You're asking for a zoning change. So that's when the neighbors do get to come down and they do get to have a say.
Right, and the other point, yeah.
And if I could just offer you some advice, when you kind of take that attitude, and I understand, I'm one of the biggest property rights people sitting here, as an attorney, and my belief in the Constitution, you write your property. However, we also do have zoning laws for a reason, so that we just don't have chaotic planning. And so there's a difference between property rights and then going to the point of chaotic planning. So not everybody that owns property gets to do anything they want, whenever they want, whatever, to their property. And I'm speaking right now.
Okay, sorry.
And I just want to say, but when you take that attitude, then there is kind of a distrust with the neighbors because now when you just say, "It's my property, I get to do what I want," well, it kind of discredits them when you tell them, "Listen, I've lived here, I want to be a good neighbor and I want to build something that's good in this neighborhood." So I think that's kind of the difference I see. So I think that's kind of the difference I see. When you have, you know, a developer, somebody that wants to build that has set plans and that can present it, no, you don't have to, but sometimes, in order to get what you want, sometimes it's a good way to do it.
You're right.
And so that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't think it's different. But when you bought the property, you also bought it at an R4. And so really, I think you could do what Mr. Fenslow said. You can just divide, you can divide up the two lots and have R4 on each one, because you bought it that way. And if you want to have two, you absolutely can. But if you want the R5, you've got to take a couple extra steps, and then you have this public hearing, and then we get to decide, you know, whether or not you get that change or not. And I think I do have, I do share in some of the neighbors' concerns. And we've dealt with this a couple months past, where we had, and forgive me, I don't remember the neighborhood. I think it's in Mr. Bagley's district again. But we had, there was a neighborhood where they were wanting to change it to go from all these single-family homes, and then it's a duplex. And what, the neighbors came down and said, no, we don't want to alternate single-family home and duplex. And it was changing the neighborhood. And so I think what your neighbors are telling you is they're starting to see that too, and they really would like to kind of keep it in the single-family range. They want to keep the feel of the neighborhood. So that's where, as much as I agree, yes, you can do with your property, but I can't just tear down my house and build a duplex either. You know, I'm not allowed to do that, and my neighbors wouldn't like it if I did, and rightfully so. And by the way, for all of you, when you live out in West Omaha, typically, all the houses that are behind you tower over you, and you have your neighbors looking, you look into each other's backyard. So I have the same thing, but it's a good thing I have. I have a lot of good neighbors, but they all, you know, tower kind of over me because of the grading. But I agree, apartment, an apartment building is a little extreme. So I think if you could maybe, I mean, what I would like to see is if you could maybe at least just take the effort to show the neighbors just a preliminary drawing of what you would like. It might make them feel better.
I can do that.
It might be better, it might make us feel a little better in giving it to you. Because what Mr. Harding is saying is, listen, R4 and R5 isn't that much different. Well, could you show us? Could you actually show us what you want to build? Just a general concept of what you're looking at, so that maybe they know it's not going to be a...
Architecture plans, or, I mean, what do you want?
I mean, even just something basic of, here's kind of the idea and the look. And am I going to have a duplex, one on top of the other? Are there going to be a townhome next to each other? Is it going to look like one house, but it's really two? I mean, I think those are all the things that the neighbors would like to see, and I don't think it's too much to ask.
I can do something like that, too.
That's all I'm saying. That's where I'm coming from. Because, you know, I agree with you. I'm likely to approve it. I would just like to see, it's my opinion, I'd just like to see just something more than nothing.
Than, okay.
Right? Just something more than nothing. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or a motion? A motion and a second. Mr. Harding? Okay. There's a motion and a second. No further comments. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item nine, an ordinance to rezon property located at 1116 and 1120 North 40th Street from R5 District and R7 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on vote on number nine is today. The applicant, please. Seeing none, any proponents on number nine? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson.
This is for planning.
Mr. Fenslow? We have a question for you on number nine.
Hi.
Yeah, Dave Fenslow, City Planning.
Thanks. Can you explain your rationale for the recommendation to rezone this area?
Well, sure. I mean, it's in our report. It's going from, it's split zoning right now. Because a lot configuration on that corner is very odd. So it's a split zoning. It's R5 and R7. And so they want to combine those two, because one building site has to be within one zoning classification. So we received their request, because that site has split zoning, to go from R5 and R7 to R5, so they can construct their project. And it's designated as low-density residential in the master plan. And much like the previous case, R5 is low-density residential zoning.
So will this have the potential to have multiple units in it?
R5 allows for duplexes and townhomes. That doesn't mean that every lot that's zoned R5 can handle those types of buildings, because there's, much like we talked in the last case, there's Site Development Regulations. So there's building setbacks, building coverage maximums, impervious coverage maximums. So, you know, we're taking a site that has half high-density residential zoning and half low-density residential zoning and rezoning to low-density residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions or a motion? Motion a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an ordinance to rezon property located southwest of 162nd and Ida Streets from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communications in opposition.
Public hearing on vote on number 10 is today. The applicant, please.
Councilmember John Blumenthal, on behalf of New Street Properties, 1700 Farnham Street. Thank you for your time today. We have a rezoning request from R4 to R5, because I'm sure you guys want to hear another. So New Street Properties is the real estate investment division for Alan Logier's family here in Omaha. We're proposing a 172-unit villa townhome project at 162nd and Ida. I can never do this. There we go. Wrong way. We'll get there. Start bringing my teenagers with me here. Okay, so we're there. Let's try that way. Perfect. And we're requesting R4 to R5 to permit us to construct essentially fourplexes. So we could construct multifamily on the site as R4. This is to make the property available for fourplexes. Give you an idea of what we're looking to build here. And as we'll talk about in a second, we've attempted to make this as consistent for fourplexes with Stone Creek neighborhood as possible. This land was previously owned by the Archdiocese for a proposed church once upon a time. The Archdiocese does not intend to build a church on that property anymore. I did want to read into the record a letter from the Archdiocese. And this was written to the Planning Board, so I guess I'll just give you some highlights from this. But they had more than three offers for the property. Excuse me, they had three offers for the property. They said, "We received three offers after marketing the property. We chose New Street based on their ownership and reputation to put together an ethical business plan for the property. I might add that we selected New Street even though that they were not the high bidder for the property. All three bidders are proposing a similar type of development that New Street is proposing. New Street's proposal had the least density of the three." So our project, again, the Archdiocese did want to see, knew that a project was going to be built on this site, wanted to have some element of control over what was going to be built, was comfortable with New Street and the project that we are proposing. We've had numerous in-person meetings. Actually, we've had, I take that back, we've had two in-person meetings with, we had an additional Zoom meeting with the neighbors. We've had significant discussions with the HOA and their attorney, who is here today. We've agreed to make a number of changes in relation to the neighbors' concerns. We told the HOA would be happy to go on record with those, so if you'll allow me to go down the list. We are going to locate the pool and clubhouse away from the exterior as per the site plan that we showed originally. By originally, I mean earlier, just a few minutes ago. The townhome design will closely reflect the Stone Creek neighborhood. And that includes 1,000 square foot of each, 1,000 square feet of each building will have a stone brick exterior. That color will match the adjacent neighborhood as much as possible. We're going to include roof shingles that are a weathered wood color to match the Stone Creek neighborhood. All the siding will be James Harding siding. We're changing the color screen to a warm gray. And so, as you can see just from the siding, that will incur some significant expense that we're willing to take on. We're incorporating a prohibition on boat and RV storage into all rental agreements. We'll place two-inch blinds in all windows. We're going to include a four-foot-high black fence along a portion of 162nd Avenue. And per the neighborhood, so we're just talking a black fence. Unfortunately, it doesn't translate that pretty, but something along those lines. And then the fence will be along the red shaded area along 162nd Avenue. Again, that fence is going to increase the cost by about $40,000. So again, we are trying to take the neighbors' concerns seriously. We're willing to do some things at significant expense for the neighbors. Bless you. Lastly, I lost my notes here. There we go. I think it got buried in the paper. We're going to include a landscaping plan in excess of what the city requires at 162nd and Bowman Avenue. That will include 21 two-inch caliber deciduous trees and 18 six-to-seven-inch-tall evergreens. And the neighborhood asked me to include that as well, which we're happy to do. So we will meet or exceed that along 162nd Avenue. And then today, we also agree with the neighborhood that we will incorporate 10 additional trees in a location to be mutually agreed, approved by mall halls at the HOA's expense. So hopefully, I got that right. Okay, excellent. So we think we've worked hard with the neighborhood, and we've addressed the majority of their concerns. There are some comments in opposition to which I'd like to respond. First of all, with regard to notice, in addition to the 300-foot notice that the city provides, we provided a 500-foot notice from each corner of each intersection of the project back in early March, for the same reason that I don't like hearing those arguments. We do try to provide as much active notice as we can, and we did here. So if somebody didn't receive notice, it's certainly not for a lack of effort above and beyond what the city requires. We did that in early March. We had a meeting, our first meeting with the homeowners association was March 15th, which was at the height of COVID. Not easy to find a place that would let you meet in public, and we still did that with some precautions in place. So we believe we've tried to reach all the neighbors that we can in response to traffic concerns. There are always traffic concerns with a project like this. At 172 units, we don't feel that that's a significant number to cause alarm for traffic. The Planning Department did not require a traffic study, nor would we typically do one for a under 200-unit complex like this. This project supports the city's master plan. We need to expand affordable rental options in all parts of the city, including Northwest Omaha. And so we'd urge the council to consider what's in the best interest of all the city as opposed to a few neighbors who did write in in opposition. That said, again, I think we have reached an agreement with the HOA for what I've read in. And again, we're happy to construct this project. We think it's going to be a great project for Northwest Omaha, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. And what you're writing on the record there is intended to represent your discussions with the neighborhood. So you wanted to have that on the record, but that's something you would probably put into the actual agreements later on in the process?
Councilman, it's a good question. We've discussed that. Frankly, we discussed, the HOA would have preferred covenants. Covenants, we think, give us too much, too many problems with saleability down the line. And we're talking 15, 20 years down the line, because if something wants to get changed, it becomes much harder to amend that down the road. But again, the Logier family and New Street Development is going to be before this council and other members. We think that they're a longstanding member of the community, and so we wanted to at least show some good faith that we're going to do what they say they're going to do, and the Logiers have a history of doing that in this city.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Covey, 1601 Dodge Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68102. I'm an attorney with the law firm of McGrath North here in town, and we represent the Stone Creek Homeowners Association. And I'm just going to very briefly state that I'm in agreement with what Mr. Blumenthal said. The project started off with some opposition. The homeowners association and New Street worked very hard together to resolve as many issues as they could and got to a place where I'm not here in opposition, which looked at one point like I may be. So with those agreements that we've reached, we would, on behalf of the homeowners association themselves, not any individual residents is my capacity here today. We would ask that you approve the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Kelly Peterson at 6860 North 166th Avenue. This is my business partner.
Hi, Buffy Baca. Same business avenue.
We're not opposed to them doing a multifamily development in this area. We have been concerned, not about 162nd Street, we've been concerned about 166th Avenue, which is the road that is, that goes into our business, which is Legacy School and Camp Legacy. We've met several times with the city planning department and have had to work with zoning and zoning issues, road studies, road development. Our biggest concern with this, and we have emailed PJ Butler, City Planning, we have emailed Ryan Haas with Public Works, we have met with New Street Properties via email, phone calls, and Zoom meetings, and none of our concerns have been addressed today, and they're real concerns. So if you look at the site plan, and we're talking on 166th Avenue. We have an 11-acre commercial property that services during the school year, students, private school students in pre-K through sixth grade. We have over 50 staff members, so we'll have easily 200 cars go in and out of that road on 166th Avenue each day. During the summertime, the 10 weeks of summer, we run Camp Legacy. We service well over 1,000 campers throughout the summer. It's a very well-populated camp, and it's a very well-known area, Northwest Bennington area, Northwest Omaha-Bennington area. Now, when we had our property developed, the city planning, the road traffic study, said that we were to only have one entrance into our property. Where a lot of schools have, you know, an entrance in and an entrance out, that was not allowed for us. And now, if you look at the site plan, those are fourplexes, where I thought originally they were duplexes. So if those are fourplexes, that's for 12 families. And there's six driveways going into this teeny-tiny road that is the entrance of our business. So number one, a concern is congestion. Number two is parking on the street. And number three would have to be that, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. But just the congestion. If there's parking on the street, what is that going to do? Oh, the third problem is that if they're constructing on 166th Avenue, what does that mean for our business? We absolutely cannot afford any road closures whatsoever. Our business is open daily, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. It's a school, it's a summer camp. And I would just like those, don't know why, our concerns were never addressed by New Street Properties. We've not been answered by the city planning department, and I think these are real concerns for this area.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Any other opponents today? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant to come back down if you want to address anything you just heard, or maybe a question from Councilmember Milton.
Yeah.
Who is recognized.
Sorry, I was wondering, if I recall, I thought that those townhomes were flipped around.
Yeah, they are. So, a couple of things. Again, John Blumenthal, 700 Farnham Street. So I want to say first and foremost, we have reached out to the school as well. I thought we had a dialogue going when we heard.
Don't talk to each other.
I apologize. I addressed the, we thought we had a dialogue going.
John, you must add something, because I know you changed the plan.
Yeah, so we did change. If you look here, there was initially four units facing, excuse me, three units facing 166th Avenue here. As what you see here, we've moved inward and away from the street so that that isn't too, specifically to address the school's concern. We did include the school on our Zoom call and other discussions. Frankly, having not heard anything in the last month or so, we didn't realize or didn't appear to think that we had any other significant concerns. I will say, 166th Avenue is a public street. We have no plans to shut it down during construction, nor could we. So don't anticipate any real issues there. But again, we'll continue to talk to the school, but we believe moving those units inward there, Councilman, as you suggested or indicated, we think that that was done to alleviate some of the concern of the school.
Thank you, John. I knew that we had actually talked about that in conjunction to the school, so that's why I wanted to make sure that got put on the record, too, that you had changed those plans and flipped those around.
Correct, and specifically for the school.
And I think, I think it might have limited, didn't it, did it reduce some of your units right there?
We took out, we took out four units there, one building, four units there.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Well, and I, you know what, and John, I just want to say that, you know, you're kind of the third or fourth one, and one of the issues that I had today is just kind of the lack of any detail, that I like to see at least something of what someone's intentions are, and I want to see this development. I mean, you went so far as to initially, from the initial meeting that we had, they were very modern. It was a very modern design, which, you know, personally, maybe I really liked, but the neighborhood wanted it to look, the neighborhood across the street wanted it to look different. And although New Street does have the legal ability to do what they want on this property, if they own it and they get the zoning, your design should be whatever you want. But I appreciate the amount of time and effort that you spent because you wanted, even though you could, you decided you didn't want to. You wanted to work with the neighborhood, and I think the amount of work, because even as of last week, I'm not so sure the HOA was completely on board, and the two of you continued to talk and work it out. So this is why, I really like this amount of detail. You made significant concessions, and even if you were to sell it, I know that there was some concern about not having covenants, but really, everything that you're doing is already going to be built. You've already made all the changes. So other than, you know, the RV elimination or two-inch blind requirement, everything else will already be there because it's being built in. It's where you're placing the clubhouse, the look and the design, the roof, the siding, I mean, everything that you've done, and moved a lot around, and again, gave up some units in order to appease the people around you. So I just want to thank you for a well-thought-out project and the amount of time and effort that you put into giving all of us the details in what you wanted to do, which is, which is why, if nobody else has anything, I will make a motion to approve this.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. I'll close public hearing. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
John, if you can come back down, please. Sorry for the running back and forth. I was going to try to grab you. So this might be, we know he's coming back down, right, for name and address? He's good.
Just go for the record, please.
John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
So maybe minor, but a couple of things have jogged my memory from seeing your Exhibit A to somebody who was opposed, different exhibit, going back to your letter from Archdiocese. Originally, you said that Archdiocese had picked you or your company, even though you didn't, you didn't have, or you had the least amount of units or something in the middle?
Correct. The least density, the least amount of units of the three proposals to purchase that they had.
Okay, so for the record, you said that, but were them different drawings that you presented to us on Exhibit A?
No, so Exhibit A, the Archdiocese hadn't seen a specific plan at that point. So I just want to, yeah, I don't want to misrepresent anything there, but they knew conceptually what we were going to build without specific drawings or specific, we had told them the ballpark of the unit number. I think we told them 180 units at that point, so now we're down to 172. So we're, and actually, we're at eight units per acre, which is much less density than we could use at this rezoning. Again, at R5, it allows us to do a fourplex, but we're still well under the max density we could have here. But yeah, we've not changed what we told, significantly what we told the Archdiocese we would do. This will be consistent with what they expect.
I appreciate you going above and beyond, especially when I see the old drawing to the new drawing that really shows that you stepped it up to make this work, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. And before I call for the vote, I'll just say, I agree with Ms. Milton. If there's a lesson from the day, and all the rezonings we've heard today, it is that we do expect some level of detail when these come in the middle of a neighborhood or represent a large property that's having some major change. Not that we don't support that, and we certainly support infill development, but, you know, basic site plans and renderings and lot layouts and street layouts are important things for us to know and that we expect to see, much like we had on this last one. So we appreciate it. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 3404 Q Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote today on number 11 is today. Are there any applicants here or any proponents on number 11? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI III overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 11515 Miracle Hills Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. The applicant, please.
Jeff Keel, 1717 Vincent Street, and I'm the representative here on behalf of the applicant, and I'll be here to answer any questions that you have about the project.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Milton.
Oh, yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Items 13 and 14 can be considered together for property located at 2411 Kessler Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, in ordinance to rezone this property from HI District to R4 District. Item 14, in ordinance to repeal the ACI I overlay district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 and 14 is today. Is the applicant here? Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for property located at 11707 Miracle Hills Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial. Item 15, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to the PUD overlay district and an LO district and to approve the development plan. Item 16, a resolution to approve a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow communication services in an LO district.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 and 16 is today. A note for council members, this was recommended for denial by the planning board and would take a supermajority of council members, five votes, to approve this item, since that's different than the planning board's recommendation. The applicant, please.
My name's Andy Holtham. I've also got Rick Rapp with me here. We're both with CEC Group. We're an engineering consulting firm, and we are representing Ensigne, which is 11707 Miracle Hills Drive, the facility that's installing an electric generator for their purpose. Got a PowerPoint here I'll run through. So we're going to go through a little bit of the projects so you understand what the project's about, our understanding of the zoning code requirements that they have to follow as far as for screening to hide the generator from the adjacent facilities. We're going to go through a few of the engineered drawings that we put together, and then also we put some pictures together that show what it looks like now and what it will look like after the trees are installed. That's what we're requesting, is that trees are allowed to be used instead of an 18-foot wall. So it's a 2,500 KW generator. You'll see pictures of it here in a second. It's a data center, so it's a core part of their business to have this generator to keep them up and running if there's a power outage. They propose, we proposed screening with trees, which, based on our understanding, is completely within the zoning code requirements. We were denied that request, and we're required to build a wall, an 18-foot wall around the generator. And just to give you a little idea of the cost, I mean, the generator is about a $900,000 generator. The wall pricing we've received is about $450,000. So it's pretty extreme pricing for a wall to shield the generator. So Ensigne is simply requesting that the trees be approved and allowed solution. What I've got here is a couple snapshots from the zoning code. We spent quite a bit of time looking through, making sure we understood what was required. I've got three or four slides after this with all the detail, but I guess the high points are defining that this equipment falls within these zoning codes and that ultimately a six-feet-high opaque barrier, evergreen trees, is an acceptable screening solution to hide the generator from the shining area. I'm going to skip through the next few codes, but if anybody has any specific questions, we can go back into those. So here's a picture of the facility. The generator is right, being located right here in this kind of red square. We've got engineered drawings that were submitted, and I've got a few existing and proposed drawings. So right now, this is the building, the generator's right here. These are the existing trees that are there. What we're proposing is to put a number of additional trees in that will completely shield it from the neighbors and the roadway. This is a drawing of what it would look like, existing trees and what we're proposing. We've got some pictures. So this is the generator. We were given approval to proceed with the generator installation, assuming we would proceed with the major amendment if we, if we would proceed with the construction of the wall if the major amendment wasn't approved. So that's why the generator has continued being installed, and that's what it looks like. We've took a number of pictures along the roadway. You can see, you know, what it looks like now and what we would propose with an additional tree from that view. Here's a view down the road about 100 feet, before and after. This is from the neighboring, to the east, I believe. So a couple of trees here will easily screen the generator. And then here's another view. We tried to get all the views we could get, just to kind of give you a little idea of what it is we're talking about. And it is a commercial area. I mean, it's other office buildings next door. And then we also went around the area within five-mile radius and took some pictures of existing facilities that have similar type of equipment to show what kind of screening they have. And as you can see, there's, there are a lot of very wide-open. There is some screening here with trees. You know, there's quite a few that don't have anything. But, I mean, our client is very willing to do what he needs to do to follow what we believe the zoning code requires. I'll zoom back up to a drawing of it. And to screen this, I mean, he has invested a decent amount of money into this generator just from the sound enclosure that it comes with. It's the nicest, you know, it's to keep the sound as minimal as possible. That's usually where we run into more of an issue is with sound pollution and neighbors. So ultimately, we're requesting that a major amendment be approved so that we can go to a zoning modification, not sure of the exact verbiage, but to approve and move forward with trees versus a very elaborate wall.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask some questions for you, so.
Sure.
Hang tight here. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fanslow, so, well, actually, before I start there, so can you tell me why no one showed up representing the applicant at the planning board on this issue?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, Rick was.
So.
Name and address.
My name is Rick Rapp. I'm with CEC Group at 6820 Lawford Road, Columbus, Ohio. So I was the applicant for the PUD application, and I believe the meeting was held on July 20th, 27th, I don't remember it was. But I did not receive the letter that the meeting was happening until four days after the meeting happened.
Well, the meeting was on the first Wednesday of the month for the planning board, so I'm not sure what, the date he threw out was at the end of the month, so I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I'm not sure. I don't remember the exact date of whenever it was. I just know that the letter that was sent to my office and one that was actually sent to 11707 Miracle Hills Drive, we did not get until two or three days after the meeting was held.
Okay, I was just curious. That's why no one showed up for the meeting, but thank you.
That is why.
Thank you. Mr. Fanslow, so I think I heard, I wrote down, I think I heard that maybe the applicant somehow thought that screening with trees would be acceptable by code?
Yes.
No, I'm asking Mr. Fanslow, please.
Screening is a allowable way to screen. The applicant is referring to the buffer yard section of our code that talks about a six-foot screen. There's another section of our code that specifically talks about mechanical equipment, transformers, generators, stuff like that. That's section 55769D5 that says all mechanical equipment, mechanical equipment shall be screened from all properties.
Thank you, because I noticed the screening that was just shown to us was really along the, it was further away from the equipment and more along the property line, or at least the parking line. Now, I'll ask Mr. Holtham, did you say that the generator's currently under construction?
Yes.
Okay. And permits have been pulled for that, right?
Provisional permit was approved to continue with construction pending the outcome of the major amendment, and if that wasn't approved, then the client agreed to, you know, proceed with whatever the result was, you know, whatever type of wall or screening.
Right, so if, if it's determined by this council that the wall is what's required and what's determined to be needed, then you'll go ahead and make that construction, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll have us try to find a different design, because the design that, the parameters that were given to us and the design that's been put out is very, very expensive.
Okay.
So we would, I'm sure we would hope to find another solution that would be agreeable to everyone.
All right, thank you. I'll go back to Mr. Fanslow. So, and I, we've all got the report here, and the reason for the planning department's recommendation to use the major amendment rather than the minor amendment, if you wouldn't mind, just for the record, kind of walk us through that a little bit.
Sure, yeah, Dave Fanslow, I don't have that reporting for me, but that's okay. We received a request, an application for a minor amendment that did not meet what we thought it should be. We looked at the site, they applied for the minor amendment. We approved it on May 20th with the conditions that it'd be screened with a wall and that it fit into the neighborhood. And I mean, it's And I mean, it's a, it's a quality business park, trying to protect the integrity of that, that business park and take the neighboring, neighbors into consideration. So we approved that minor amendment on May 20th because we thought it met the code and when what should be there with the PUD that's in place and the assumed, the assumed conditional use permit for a data center in, in that zoning district. That was always on the table. The applicant, to my knowledge, wanted to try to get a major amendment approved that didn't meet the requirements of our minor amendment that we agreed to do as a minor. So went to planning board for everybody's information on June 2nd, 2021, with the recommendation of denial and the planning board unanimously denied the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. So now I have a question for the clerk, I believe. So if the recommendation from the planning department is for denial and we, and we took a vote and it was denied, does, how do we, how is it such that we can vote on that so that the applicant can, can go ahead and finish construction on the generator and if we approve the, the wall rather than the tree screening?
I think that's more of a question for the law department because if you made the motion to deny, it would just take a vote of four.
So a better route probably sounds like maybe an amendment? Would that be?
I'll defer to Matt on that one.
Because if we vote to deny, I think, is there some timeframe that they can't come back and?
NACU's law department, I'm just shaking my head at Eliza. So if I understand what your question is, Councilman, Councilman Harding, it's you want to know how to do something as opposed to just a straight-up denial or I guess to, yeah, to affirm the planning board's decision to deny it?
Yeah. But what I, I just want to make sure we don't get into a situation where if we uphold the, or if we vote for the denial, that if, that then they, that somehow precludes them from being able to finish the construction and do it with a wall if that's what is, is the recommendation of the planning department?
I don't want to keep going down the line till it ends up at planning, but I think what the council can do today is either, I don't think that you're able to make any changes to it because the planning board made its decision based on the information that they had in front of them. So to start changing it with amendments and things like that, then it's changing what the planning board looked at when they made their recommendation. You can put it on file if you want and maybe that can resolve it and they can go back to planning board with a new plan and then the planning board can weigh in again. But I think to make any changes to it is going against what the planning board and the planning department already looked at. But for further comment, I would defer to Mr. Fanslow.
Okay. And I'll let, it looks like there's some other lights on, so I'll let those ask the, their questions and have a side conversation with planning.
Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I had similar questions. I guess this is the issue I have is that the planning board and, and the planning department moved to deny it because of codes. Now, what I'm wondering is maybe if they had this additional information and maybe you had worked with them, because one of my biggest issues was the sound. I was going to bring up the sound issue because I've had sound issues with the Hy-Vee at 132nd in Dodge, which I'm still having sound issues with that Hy-Vee, but great people, it's just the equipment they have on top of the roof, there's virtually no way to solve it. You know, it's not the poor manager at Hy-Vee's fault, but it's still a disruption to the neighbors. And so my first thought was if you have a giant generator and you weren't using a wall, that it could be a significant disruption to maybe the business owners around there or there is an assisted living center a little further away. But that was my concern, but you did say that it actually comes with a sound enclosure.
Again, we can provide that detail.
Well, I understand, but, but the other things are, I don't go against code. I mean, and especially when I have the planning department and the planning board both review it and want to deny it, it's pretty hard for me to go back and tell them I disagree. That's difficult for me. But when I hear that no one was at the meeting, or I guess my other question is, you went to the planning board, is this something that should go in front of, I guess, for these three talking? Is this something that could go in front of the zoning board of appeals that hasn't done so?
Well, not, no, not really. I mean, PUDs are approved by the council, so there's no way for the ZBA without a council recommendation to direct the applicant to go to the ZBA to waive a certain part of the code. There's not a, I guess, short answer is that there's not a direct path to the ZBA for this issue. If council wanted to direct the applicant to go to the ZBA because they were leaning or wanting to approve a non-code compliant issue, you could do that, but I'm not the city attorney.
I'm not, I'm not so sure that I necessarily followed that either. I guess what I, what I'm saying is, there were also photos, Mr. Fanslow, of other generators in other places. Is that because those particular buildings weren't under a PUD?
I can't accurately answer that question because I don't know where those buildings are, how they were entitled, when they were entitled, if they're part of a PUD, if they're part of a use permit. So if, so I can't answer that because I don't know the history of those buildings.
So I guess maybe what I would like to do, first of all, this is, this is in my district, it's on the border of mine and Mr. Harding's district, and I think he works closer to the building than I do. I'd like to lay this, I'd like a motion to lay this over.
Actually, please, before you do that, Tom.
Okay. I'm going to, I'll let, there's some other people that have their lights on, but I guess what I would like to say is there's a lot of unanswered questions. I really would have liked the opportunity to have been presented with this information before today at 2:00, especially if it was denied at the planning board. I mean, we are here to help businesses and constituents, whether, you know, individuals. It's hard for me to come out because I have all these questions that we're now bringing up at, at 4:00 on a Tuesday when I was never made aware of it before the meeting, so.
I guess we weren't aware that we had the opportunity to do that. This was our first opportunity, we thought we had to present this. Where there was a lot of conversation between our client, the Enzo representative and another representative of our company with zoning and there's a lot of discussions trying to work this out. I think our position is we don't follow where the code says that we have to do something.
Okay, well, I'm not going to have that argument.
I understand. I'm just saying that's, I think.
Okay, well, I understand, and this is how it works in Omaha. All seven of us here, we're, we're always open to meet and in fact, we spend our other days when we're not sitting here.
Sure.
Meeting with other people. The zoning issue that we just had with Mr. Blumenthal in Stone Creek, the reason we didn't have 60 opponents to that was because of the number of meetings that we had and that count, that I was included in beforehand. So then we were able to work out a lot of these issues, we weren't hashing them out today. And so I just wanted to give you an example. So here in the city of Omaha, that, that's what we do here on the city council. We don't just come here on Tuesday afternoon, we're working outside. So I'll defer to maybe what some of the other people are doing. I don't necessarily want to just deny it because maybe there, maybe there are some options in between and I think it would be good to maybe explore those. But if it's required by the PUD and it's required by code, you know, I don't know if I'll be able to get around it. I'm just saying that I have too many questions today to vote yes or no.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, yeah, I guess I'm a little confused as well. You're, sir, you're putting in a million-dollar generator. I find it hard to believe this is your first rodeo with going to cities and planning departments and planning boards. And you have to see for us that you have two denials coming from two bodies that really dig into these details and obviously there's a code compliant part of this that you haven't met. So the way I'm reading this, the way I look at it is the, there was a minor amendment that allowed for the construction of this generator and that's probably what got approved to get you started. But part of that approval was the plans that were submitted with the minor amendment. You had to provide, or you have to provide a brick screen wall along the north and the east. So there's really no way around that. Otherwise, if, if you agreed to that and that's what it approved, you wouldn't be here now for this part. Otherwise, it seems like you're trying to get around it with this major approval. But, so you have this wall and then you have the trees as well, but the problem I'm having is the pictures you have for existing, do you have any existing pictures without the generator already in place? Because I'm visualizing a tree that's 40 years old and you're going to put one in that's eight foot tall.
Well, we've got, I mean, that's, that's what it looks like without the extra trees, but the generator is sitting there.
Do you have any pictures without the generator in place?
Probably not, not in this presentation right now, no.
And then a few photos forward where you're traveling through the neighborhood, I could have swore one of them were an OPBD box and maybe not a generator, but that's just something for you to work on when you come back. So I think what we need to do here is, like I said, you're putting in a million-dollar generator. Part of the bit is you're going to have to put in this brick screen wall and the trees. So it's how do we get to that? So again, the minor amendment was approved for you to start work based on what was going to happen. Otherwise, right here in the analysis, it says, and hopefully you guys read this because this is your job, not mine, it says the planning department recommends denial of this request for what you're here today, basically utilizing the trees along the east and the south for property line screening. And then it gives you the code that deals with generators, not the code for, say, your average everyday screening. So there are other people ask questions, but I, I know what's involved in this, especially with the cost that's associated. I'm sure you have workers that are in town probably doing work here, but we need to figure out how we get this project moving forward.
Sure.
Because I, I don't want to deny it, but I won't go against the planning board and planning department on this particular issue. It's not our fault that you have this big project and you didn't show up for the meetings to get yourself prepared. Thank you.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I asked a question earlier and it was about the permit and I think you represented that it was approved and it's not. I've been informed by the planning department that the permit for the construction of the expanded generator was not approved. So it appears the work that's being done today is being done without the permit. So you can, what I was trying to do earlier was figure out a way that they could do this without any further delay and be able to put with the wall. So I am reminded by the planning department that they can do this under the minor amendment, they can apply for it under the minor amendment with the wall and it would be approved. What they're trying to do here today is do it without the wall, which then requires the major amendment. So I'm going to be, that's, I apologize for, for asking you not to make a motion because I am actually going to make the motion to deny. And the reason being is that, and I believe Mr. Holton even said that if it was denied that they would go ahead and figure out a way to do it with the wall. So knowing that they can proceed with a minor amendment with the wall, I am going to make a motion to deny, uphold the, the planning department and planning board's recommendation for denial.
I'll second that. I agree with that analysis. We can't have a generator without screening occur and so if this is the most expedient process to pursue, I wish to have that happen and grant that authority to the planning department to make sure happens. I would be supportive of that, too. Any further discussion, any further lights? Motion to second to deny, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Question passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 17, to consider a class C liquor license application for the Good Life Sports Bar and Grill located at 1203 South 180th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 this today. Proponents, please. Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804, South 87th Avenue here on behalf of the applicant. If I may just give you a brief background on the application to let you, you all know where, where the applicant stands and just a little additional background. So this was the purchase for the Good Life locations in the metro area. This is the only one in the city of Omaha limits. Temporary operating permit was granted mid-July to Mr. McKeever and his business partners. They've been operating it since. It is still the Good Life in, in concept, but as you, or as many of you heard at the May 18th hearing for revocation for the, for the seller's license, operations are not the same. So he is complying with the Liquor Control Act. All, all employees have to have training. Liquor Control Act or Liquor Control Commission approved training for, for all employees. A couple other items maybe of interest on the application. There's a question that notes, are you borrowing any, any money from any other source? Out of an abundance of caution, we advise Mr. McKeever and his partners to, to check yes because as is custom, you, you purchase a business and then the rest of the sum is paid over a course of years and that's the case here as well. So we wanted to be sure that we were transparent about that. And then lastly, is brought to our attention, the seller did have a bus that was used between locations. Mr. McKeever and his partner are not utilizing that. And if they do decide to go that route, we will have to go to the Public Service Commission and the Liquor Control Commission to get license for that, for that bus as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Hi, Aaron McKeever with Good Life, 1411 South 200th Avenue Circle.
Here to answer questions?
Yes.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Looks like we have one here.
Chris Wagner, 11620M Circle. I'm the executive director of Project Extra Mile. We are working towards preventing alcohol-related harms in the community and we're here to convey on behalf of our coalition, our concern with the lack of accountability for alcohol retailers that break the law, especially when those violations result in serious injury or death. We're also opposed to the upgrade of the previous license from an on-sale only location to an off-sale location as well, just based on the research that's available that shows that those off-sale locations carry a greater amount of risk for the community with regard to alcohol-related harms. The applicant noted to KMTV for their July 22nd article that he expects to retain all employees from previous ownership. And based on what the council heard in terms of testimony from former employees of the Good Life, there was, it was indicated there was a culture of allowing underage drinking, both among the servers and the management. So obviously, we're concerned if those employees are retained, what is the applicant's plan for changing that culture? I encourage that he's going to be training all of his employees. However, that's not, there's really not sufficient evidence to show that that will reduce alcohol-related harms. And so it's really important that the current or the proposed applicant is conveying the importance of following the law and that they're serious about preventing underage drinking. We, we, we partner with local law enforcement, we have for many years, since 1997, to help coordinate alcohol compliance checks in the Omaha metro area. Since 1997, we've checked nearly 14,000, we've conducted nearly 14,000 checks and out of the 1,651 sales that did occur to minors during those operations, 854, more than half of those checked the minor's ID and still sold the alcohol. And it's not a leap of faith to assume that many of those had been trained, had conducted... had con- had, had continued or, or completed the Liquor Control Commission, the, the trainings that are approved by the Liquor Control Commission. So again, it's important to know what, what, how is, is, is the applicant going to convey the seriousness of, of preventing underage drinking to, um, his employees? And then finally, I just wanna take this opportunity to, I don't know if you're aware, but, um, the Good Life at this location, um, it was not held accountable for those sales to minor. So on, um, December twenty-fifth of last year, um, there were multiple sales to underage individuals and intoxicated individuals. And the council at the, at the time, this council in May opted not to go forward with a revocation hearing. And subsequently, the Liquor Control Commission never held a hearing on that, on those sales to minor. So this business was never held accountable, um, for those violations and, and, and serious ones. And I, I think that sends a message to the industry that, you know, people aren't taking this as serious as they should. You know, words are great, but actions speak louder than words. And so for these reasons, we'd ask that you recommend denial. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, um, I, I'll go in reverse order, I think. Uh, Mr. Wagner, could you come back just for a second, please?
Chris Wagner, one one six two zero M Circle.
Thanks. And, and I wanna thank you and your organization for, for what you do. I think you make a truly, um, you're very impactful in, in what your efforts are. And, and I know it's a, an uphill battle, but do appreciate your, your efforts. Um, I, I do wanna, I, I know statistics make for good arguments and, and you, you talked about the fourteen thousand checks and the fifteen hundred or so that were sold to minors. How many of those do you know were sold to, um, licenses that Mr. McKeever or the Heimans have?
To the class of license you're referring to?
No. How many of, of the, of the fifteen hundred or so, I think it was your number?
Sixteen fifty-one.
Sixteen fifty-one, thank you. Were sold to minors. How many of those were, um, sold under the licenses that Mr. McKeever or the Heinman, Heimans, I believe is how you pronounce their name? How many to those license holders were those sold?
I, I guess I don't follow your question. I'm, you're, you're not looking for the class of, so I, I.
No, I'm asking if, if we're, we're going to the, the applicant and if there are any violations.
That I do not know. I was simply noting the importance of going beyond just looking at the ID.
Okay. So, but your, your argument then is more kind of a general statement and not directed toward any license holdings that any of these owners have?
In this particular instance, um, that's correct. If you would allow me to expand, I would be, I would like to, but I defer to you.
Well, I, I think you answered the question.
Okay.
We don't know them. There, there is no, they don't have any violations as, as far as any records that we have. So, thank you. Now, I'll ask, um, Mr. Kelly and, and Mr. McKeever, back up to the podium, please. I guess, but go ahead and say your names.
Yeah. Sean Kelly, two eight zero four, Southeast seventh Ave.
Okay.
Aaron McKeever, fourteen eleven South two hundredth Avenue Circle.
Okay, thank you. And, and obviously, um, no further, uh, involvement and ownership at all with Mr. McMahon, is that correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And then the, the financial arrangement that you kind of alluded to, Mr. Kelly, I assume that there's a, a note being paid back to Mr. McMahon over time for the, the purchase of the, the, uh, the business?
Yes, precisely. The majority of the purchase price has already been paid.
One of the things I was gonna eat, you, you beat me to the punch a little bit. What, what we found out after, um, after talking with, uh, Mr. McMahon a, a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, that there was a party bus that was being run through these operations too, which was doing so illegally. So that was, one of the questions I was gonna have today was, is the party bus still gonna operate? And I think you've answered that the answer is no, because you'd need, I think you need to, you have to go to the Public Service Commission and the Liquor Control Board because it needs its own license.
Yep. Two separate licenses from those aforementioned agencies.
Okay. Because that was, it, it, Mr. McMahon was very blatant in advertising that. It was on Facebook. It was very well known that that's, that's something that you could do. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's not gonna happen. Then I, I, um, Aaron, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'll, I'll ask kind of a general question. I'll let you, you know, take it as deep as you wanna do, but what are you gonna do differently?
Well, with my experience in owning Pitch and Jams in the past, I mean, we've had no violations. And with that, it comes with training and we have layers of training that come down from ownership to management to our GM. Our employees through Good Life is go- they're going to take, of course, uh, serve safe alcohol. So that's for the servers, managers and bartenders.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I, I think it, it's been stated publicly by you that you wanna keep, I think, as many of the employees or, and management, um, that are willing to go through that additional training and, uh, want to continue employment there. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. I think what was stated prior was that all employees were staying. Uh, there has been some turnover and it's been understood to the entire staff that we do not serve two minors.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'll, I'll say it because I, I think it's, you know, it's in the application, but also and you just mentioned too, your, uh, previous ownership and relationship with both Jams and Pitch. And, and your course record is, has been, I don't think you've had any violations in the past or?
No.
Yeah, thank you. I'll bring, I, I had a constituent, um, actually, um, asked me or, or emailed me something along these lines. And, and I, I, I found the KMTV three news account on it and it said something. The comment that was given to me was, you know, I, I think he thinks he's just gonna get it because it's, it's gonna be easy, because he stated he had no problem when he, when he was getting it for Barrel &amp; Vine. And I don't think he meant to say, I'll, I'll put words in your mouth. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think he meant to say that he thought it was a slam dunk. I think you were saying that because of your past operations and your past record is that, and you know, there's no violations other than maybe some speeding tickets, um, that, that's why you thought that you, you had confidence that you would be able to do this?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's all I had at this point. So, um, thank you for, for your testimony today.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Well, I think Brinker asked my question, but I, I wanna make sure that I'm clear and that everybody's clear that Mr. McMahon has no financial interest. I, I see the carryback provision and I understand how that works. And, uh, sometimes when a business starts to go south, there's a consultative arrangement for the prior owner to have some, uh, participation. It's in his best interest that you're successful. And I wanna just be sure that he is, uh, no part of this business going forward.
Not at all.
Okay.
And if I could, Councilman Rowe, just to add to that, if he ever were to, it would be up to you and the Liquor Control Commission to let him back in. So he doesn't just get a fly back in if, you know, if Mr. McKeever and his partners decide not to continue the business.
And Mr. Kelly, uh, I saw you wanted to add something a little while ago. Would you?
Yeah.
Forward to do that if you'd like to.
Thanks. I just wanted to rebut, but Councilman Harding's questions, really took care of that. But with the exception of one, that's a Class C, that's, that's just a preference for businesses to do, to do some carryout, which is fairly common in, in the marketplace in Omaha.
Thank you. And I would just add, um, to some of the discussion here that, um, we did check, of course, to make sure there were no connections. We did in fact check substantially that, uh, ownership had changed and we did and were poised to repeal the last license, unlike inconsistent with some testimony that was given today. Uh, the former council, previous to a few council members here, did delay the matter, pending an outstanding investigation that was underway. I was skeptical of that delay, but that did continue and that investigation continued. And once it was cleared, charges were gonna be made, this council was poised to repeal that license. And I think that's what led to the sale of the business. So it wasn't that this council was not taking action. In fact, I think that's why we're here today. Ms. Melton.
Well, thank you. And you, you just said what I wanted to make sure was said. To say that there was no accountability whatsoever, there's actually charges that have been filed. He's lost his business. I can't imagine at least this council, while any of us are on it, approving a liquor license for Mr. McMahon based upon what I saw and I think the charges that he may be facing. I don't wanna, wanna get into that, but to say that we didn't hold him accountable is untrue. And in fact, we had it scheduled, um, for our council meeting, I believe, two weeks ago. We were gonna do it the last Tuesday in July, but we found out that there were, that the sale had happened. And the last thing I wanna do is be punitive against innocent people who were employees of the Good Life, because they employ a lot of people at all the different locations. It's not just one. The liquor license goes to everybody. And I don't think that there's any justification to shut it down and punish people that had nothing to do with the incident, because I think it was Mr. McMahon is the one that was directing employees from what we saw at the one hearing. And he was the one that's solely responsible, not most of the good employees that, that have been employed there for a while. So I appreciate the fact that you've bought the business and that there are employees that are keeping their jobs, but as any good business owner, sometimes they don't all fit. And so, um, figuring out, figuring out who's the right fit and not, it is your job as the new owner. But I was very impressed to see here, you've been in Omaha since two, I mean, you've been in Omaha a lot longer than this, but consistently since two thousand twelve at three different places and have had no violations. And I wanna make that very clear. That's the kind of responsible bar owner that we would like to see. And I, I hope that, that, to see that continue.
Yes. We just wanna be a good neighbor in our communities and obviously, uh, would enjoy all of you coming into our establishments and, uh, you know, that's all we wanna be is a good neighbor. And I mean, I don't have children, but in terms of underage drinking, I mean, there's just no tolerance for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we appreciate that. As parents, we, we appreciate that. Because we, you know, we do count on, we do count on bar owners to be responsible and that is what we need for the safety of our, of our young children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, seven to zero. Item eighteen, to consider a Class I liquor license application for Pepper Jack's Grill located at five one zero South Seventy-second Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eighteen is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom, if that's, uh, still available to be shown. All right, thank you. Mr. Alkindy, are you, we're gonna meet you here in a second? All right. Your name and address, please.
I'm R. Alkindy with Pepper Jack's Grill, one one four seven zero Bammun Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any proponents today on number eighteen? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen is approved, seven to zero. Item nineteen, to consider a Class D liquor license application for NP Mart eleven located at three five three six Q Street.
Public in, public hearing and vote on number nineteen is today. The applicant, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, two eight zero four, South eighty-seventh Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Second, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nineteen is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty, to consider a special designated liquor license for Crescent Moon Ale House located at three five seven eight Farnum Street for an Oktoberfest event on September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth from three PM to two AM with music ending at midnight each night.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty is today. The applicant, please.
Candice Gladwin, thirty-five seventy-eight Farnum Street, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Uh, Amy Kruger, Operations Manager, uh, twenty-seven twenty-seven South Forty-first Street is my address. Here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item twenty-one, to consider a special designated liquor license for the September Fest event located at four five five North Tenth Street in Lot D on September third from five PM to midnight, September fourth and fifth from noon to midnight with music ending at midnight each day, and September sixth from nine AM to eleven PM.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-one is today. I'll note that I'd spoke to the applicant before the meeting. We do require applicants to come down and be present for these meetings. But having spoken to them previously and having this be an annual event, we've seen many, many times, and there being no changes to their format, I thought it was acceptable they not have to be here today. Any other proponents that wanna speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, to consider a Class C liquor license application for Zul Sports Bar located at five one three two L Street. Is communications in opposition?
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. The applicant, please.
Michael Polk, two seven one two, South eighty-seventh Avenue, here with the applicant, Alejandro Santino behind me. I'm here to answer any questions. And I would just like to inform the council that we have agreed to some stipulations regarding the license with the law department, and those were, uh, signed and presented, uh, prior to this hearing today.
Thank you. I think we'll hear about those here in a minute. Um, I'll take any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Weeson, would you like to come up and present the city's agreement with the applicant? So we all know.
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. We're here today as a result of a long-form, uh, request by the city council earlier this year due to a number of continuing issues at, uh, Zul Sports Bar, including some disturbances, noise violations and things of that nature. That led us to, uh, the current application today and, uh, the number of stipulations that should have been distributed to the council before the meeting in an attempt to address some of these things. These include, uh, a requirement that the applicant, uh, provide contact information to the Southwest Precinct Captain and Omaha Police Officers so they can facilitate a communication and be easily contacted in the event of any disturbance or emergency. Training requirements for the applicant and managers, uh, requirements for indoor security to, uh, terminate appropriately any disturbances that might happen. A requirement that the applicant hire, uh, at least two certified law enforcement officers of the state of Nebraska for a period of one year on Thursday, Friday and Saturday evenings in an attempt to prevent disturbances and to address some of the crowd and noise concerns that were occurring after hours, uh, at the premises. A requirement to, uh, post signs indicating that the premises is closed between the hours of two thirty AM and I believe seven AM to again help, uh, facilitate that, uh, issue with the neighbors of it being overcrowded and people loitering and causing issues after the bar closed at night. In addition to some lighting requirements, some requirements that the applicant followed the directed health measures, uh, and things of that nature. We believe that these stipulations will, uh, help address some of these concerns while preserving the city's ability to, uh, check in on them periodically to make sure that they're being followed. And if there are continued, uh, violations of the Liquor Control Act or these stipulations, there would be inability for the Liquor Control Commission to have an immediate show cause hearing on why the, uh, license should not be canceled, suspended or revoked. In addition to this, the council would maintain its authority to move for, to cancel the license if it felt appropriate.
Thank you. Thanks. We appreciate that overview. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Polk, if you wanna come up, please, and, and on your way up, I wanna thank Mr. Weesing with, uh, City Law, obviously for the work that he's put into this. As you know, we're at this step because there are no other steps. Uh, these stipulations that you're agreeing to with your, uh, client, they can come up too if they'd like. We're at this point because we don't have steps further to go. These stipulations that you're gonna agree to, they're very serious. So I, I wanna make sure on the record, uh, that you're, you're making this request to the council today to amend your application, uh, for the Class C liquor license to include the stipulations that you and your client, or your client has signed.
Yep.
Yep. On behalf of Fama LLC Azul Sports Bar, that is correct.
Okay. Because then obviously, in what you read, the next steps are the Liquor Control Commission, I believe, and probably wouldn't be good when you came before us after that. So I wish you luck. I know things have been better than they were, but unfortunately, the events that preceded to this day has got us to these stipulations. So I'd make a, if there's no other lights, I'd make a motion to approve based on the stipulations of the amendment to just amend their liquor license application.
So that'd be a motion to amend, to include the stipulations?
Correct. Okay. I'll second that. Now for the lights, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Motion as?
As amended.
Second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 23 and 24 were held on July 27th.
Can I have your permit? Second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. I'll note that number 37 has been withdrawn from the agenda.
So the public hearings on agenda items number 25 through 36 and 38 through 44 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hello, Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street. I won't take much time because it's been a long day, but I am here to talk about number 41, which is talking about a 2019 flood event. And I feel like it's just important that we recognize that climate change is real and that these 100-year, 200-year events are actually turning into like two-year events. And I just feel, last time, I guess it was the, kind of, the 10th, I believe, of July, we were wondering kind of where the city's statement on this stuff was. The mayor had a press conference while city council was meeting. I'm not sure if that's happening right now. I'd really just like to know why there wasn't much more of a, of a city response to this historic issue. Buildings were like removed from their foundations. I, there's, there's kind of a lot of like hearsay controversy going around, like, did it have to do with the construction of the Gene Lahey Mall? I'm just, I think it's about flooding. Could we then, I could make it relevant to all the sewer money? We could, I mean, okay, point taken, but I think that like, we can't just ignore these types of things. And I guess if you want to, I, I will make it specifically to this money that we're spending on repairing the seawall. I just think that we need to have a better plan for flooding and issues like this, like we're just gonna keep dumping money into something that we know is just gonna continue to flood. And I just think that, you know, climate change was brought up at, you know, during the election cycle, and I just think that we really need to get real about it and have a proactive situation instead of just continuing to react and deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on these items? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Can I have your permit?
Second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 45, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement in the amount of $42,000 for the Robert Bartlett versus Quinn Swakonos in the City of Omaha.
Public hearing and vote on number 45 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Can I have your permit?
Second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 45 is approved, seven to zero. Item 46, an ordinance to amend multiple sections of Chapter 34 of the Omaha Municipal Code to establish procedures and rules for the use and lease of public right-of-way.